Good evening. I know we still have a few people stringing in as the traffic was a little bit on Wallace Road and the bridge, as usual. I'm Christy Perry and I'm the Superintendent of Schools for Salem-Kaiser School District. And I want to thank you, I feel like this is buzzing a little bit, I want to thank you for coming tonight and meeting our candidates for school board. School Board is a really important part of a school district. They're the governing body for the work that we do with over forty, almost 42,000 students every day. And so to me, this is one of the most important positions as a leader of a school district. So thank you for taking the time. I hope you learn a lot about our candidates tonight. What I'm most thrilled about is our numbers of candidates. It speaks highly to our involvement of our community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Board Chair Nancy McMorrisodics, who would like to talk just a little bit about the role of the school board.
Welcome. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the role of school board members. Salem-Kaiser is a policy governance board, giving the board two main functions. The first function is hiring and supervising the superintendent, and the second is determining the results by which the superintendent's job will be evaluated. In policy governance, the results of the district are the results by which we judge the superintendent's performance. In my eight years on the board, I have learned that micromanaging the district is a recipe for failure. I've seen boards around the state take positions that committed significant portion of budgets without regard for the district as a whole or the students in that district. Board members are mostly not educators, some are educators, but mostly we are not. We're community members who listen to our constituents and ask questions to determine if the district has a well-defined plan to move the dial on student achievement. Even though board members represent zones, all registered voters who live within the district's boundaries have the opportunity to vote for all the zones. So this year, that is all the odd-numbered zones, Zone 1, 3, 5, and 7. Finally, if you live in Polk County, you don't receive a voter's pamphlet for the May elections. You can access the Marion County voter's pamphlet at the county clerk's website to review the candidate information for all the zones. And I think the district is also going to put a link to that on their website so that it's easy to get to, and it has all of their candidate statements laid out. So that's all I have. Now it's time to hear from the candidates. I'm going to introduce our moderator tonight, who is Abrahan, who is a North Salem High School student.
Thank you. My name is Abrahan Karivai, and I am... I've been involved with FPLA. I've been involved with North Salem FPLA since my sophomore year. This year, my senior year, I've been granted this honor of being an emcee for the candidate forum. I am president for this year as well. And next year, I plan on going to Western Oregon University for computer science. At this moment, I would like to acknowledge any and all elected officials in the room right now. If you guys could please stand up. Thank you. Before we begin, let's go over the rules for the forum today. I will be asking the questions, and every candidate will have one minute to answer. Questions could be submitted by the public at the back table. Candidates will not ask each other questions, and we will have a timekeeper, Jenny, giving us warnings. Yellow is 15 seconds, and red is hard stop. This is an opportunity for candidates to talk about the school board and what they want to change. And it is not... And not why others shouldn't take the school board position. Let's keep this positive. Let's give three minutes to each candidate to introduce themselves. We will be starting with Zone 1, Mark Bateman.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bateman, and I'm a candidate for school board in Zone 1. First, I want to thank the school district and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this evening's event. It's incredibly important that we gather at these kinds of times to hear more about our community and those who want to lead. I grew up in Salem. I graduated from McKay High School. I went back east to go to school, start career and family, and with my family moved back to Salem about 10 years ago. I'm a researcher by profession. I ask questions. I connect dots that other people haven't been able to connect, and I think creatively about solving problems, and have taken those skills into senior leadership roles in a variety of for-profit and nonprofit organizations. I am in my second term on the school district budget committee, and have also served on the facilities task force. There are three things that I will focus on as a school board member. The first two are what I call content kind of goals. Our graduation rate is unacceptably low, and we need to focus on that, but it's a community-wide conversation. It's not something that the school board can solve, all of the issues that are depressing our graduation rate by themselves. Think poverty. The second content area is, we need to be looking further into the future and identifying what kind of education we need to be delivering. The world is changing, and that rate of change is accelerating. We need to create lifelong learners because what we teach in high school and earlier grades is not going to be sufficient for a 40-year career after 2030. The third area of focus is more of a process kind of goal. Those first two areas are huge topics, and the reality is that seven individuals serving on the school board are not going to be able to solve those problems by themselves. We need to engage the community in a real conversation. And that means more than just being welcoming when the community comes to the board. It means being proactive about inviting the community into that conversation, and not for three minutes of testimony where the red light goes off and your time is up. All of us tonight are going to be able to tell you three minutes isn't enough time to be able to say very much. We need to engage the community in deep conversation. That's what it's going to take to move the community forward. I can lead that kind of change on the school board. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Goss. I'm happy to be running for Zone 1 with the other people on this side of the podium. So I also want to thank the chamber and the school district for giving us a platform to let you know what we intend to do and how we feel about the job. The only thing I regret is that I didn't ask for a booster chair for this. I feel like I'm clucking over the top of the table, but I'll survive fine. I think I have the experience, the education, the knowledge of the community, and the time to serve in this position. So I have an education. I went to Inglewood School here in very own Salem, Oregon. I went to Parrish, and went to North Salem. Then I went off to Oregon State and received a bachelor's in elementary education. And then I went off to Western Oregon State University and received a master's degree in guidance and counseling. And then I topped it off by a doctorate of education administration. And I think I know the ropes of a school district. As far as experience goes, I've been a classroom teacher. I've been a counselor at Leslie School here in Salem. I've been a principal superintendent of the Canyon in Detroit and Brighton-Bush and those areas. So I think that I have a contribution to make, and it's my time to give back to the community. So I would like that opportunity. I would like to do that. I think a portion of this job is very much related to the community. I have a long understanding of Salem. I know Salem. I know each area. And I would like to use that with the experience and knowledge I've met. I'm a good listener, and I also think we need to reach out into the community. I've learned in my career that lots of citizens are a little bit intimidated by the field of education, and it brings them back to when they were small and sat in a little chair behind a desk. So I think we do need to reach out. We need to go into people's organizations, their yards, their backyards, wherever they wish to meet with us. And by doing that, I think we get a true picture of what they want their schools to offer. And thank you for listening.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Harder, and I'm also a candidate for Zone 1. Thank you to the chamber and the district and all of you for being here tonight. As a young girl, my mom escaped an abusive relationship, and she and I moved to a new city. I was in a new school as a sixth grader. I was an only child and was very much on the road to being a statistic. Were it not for the dedicated public school teachers that mentored me, encouraged me, and challenged me, that has allowed me to be a physician, a privilege of being a physician for the last 25 years. If I'm elected to the school board, I think that's going to be one of my ways to give back to those dedicated teachers. Should I be elected? I'd like to focus on three main areas. The first is graduation rates. As you all are aware, our graduation rates are not where they should be. As a mom, I'm going to be really excited to see my high school senior walk across the stage in a few weeks and get his diploma. But I'm really concerned about the 25% of kids that are not going to graduate. That is unacceptable. We need to break down the barriers to engagement for our kids and work on relevant learning experiences to keep them in school and on target for graduation. Secondly, we need to work on facilities management. As part of the Citizens Facilities Task Force, we looked at capacity issues and gave our recommendations to the school board. Five of our six high schools are at or over capacity right now. We have 42,000 kids in this district and growing all the time. We have huge capacity issues we have to address, as well as safety and security issues. And we have to do all this with an eye towards equity, as well as sound financial stewardship. The third thing I'd like to work on is continuing to expand our career technical education and work on workforce development. I have been a small business owner for my entire professional career, and I know how important it is to have an educated and prepared workforce. We need to expand career and tech educational opportunities in our district, which have already proven to be extremely successful in keeping kids in school and on target for graduation. We know that just one course in our CTEC increases graduation rates by 15%, which is unbelievable. We have so many challenges in this district, and yet we have an engaged community, as we can see that you're here tonight, and I thank you for that. Working together in a collaborative fashion, doing things not just because it's the way we've always done them, but because they make sense for learning, to keep our kids on track, to keep our kids engaged, that's what we should focus on. I look forward to the opportunity to be a part of that process, and I hope that I'm on a school board that will rise to those challenges before us. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Ross Schwarzenjuber, and I live just out of town here. I'm running for school board director, Zone 1, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I was born in McMinnville and grew up in rural Polk County, right here in the Yolas. So I've been next to Salem-Kaiser School District my entire life. I was raised on a sheep farm, so we had a family farm together. Everyone pitched in to make the family farm work, and I learned quite a bit of entrepreneurial skills with buying and selling sheep. But it wasn't enough. When my parents, they were... When they were young, they only made it through eighth grade here in Oregon. They spoke German until they got into first grade. My family came over in the 1700s, but kept their language for 200 years until my generation. And we need to kind of look at that and apply that type of inclusiveness. I was sort of the opposite of it. Let people be diverse, and that's what I'm trying to accomplish. So when I was a high schooler, I went to private school here, Western Mennonite. Also, I graduated from Amity High School. At that point, Vern Duncan was the superintendent of Public Instruction in Oregon, and he appointed me to the Student Advisory Committee at the Department of Education. And what we did there with about 12 other students, every month, we would kind of run around the Department of Education and get facts and figures and figure out what's happening. This is 1982 during the recession. A lot of the Pell Grants were just coming out, so we formed some position papers as high schoolers and tried to represent all of Oregon high schools at that level. I went to Chameca Community College, Oregon State University, and finally graduated from Boston University with a biology degree. I've worked in biotechnology. I've worked as a research assistant at Oregon State University. I'm very well-founded, very well knowledgeable about research and scientific data, and I'm really concerned about the lack of applying these research methods to what's happening today in education. Now, a couple things that we can do that I'd like to focus on is smaller class size. We know that's proven to work for better outcomes. And I'd also like to reduce the privatization of public funds in schools. And I think we're in for a paradigm shift, and I think I'm the best candidate up here to help us get through this paradigm shift. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Baker, and I am running for the school board, Zone 3. And I too want to thank the chamber and the school for opening up this facility for us to be able to engage with you this evening. I was born and raised in and around Salem. I actually grew up on a farm east of Salem in Shaw. If any of you have heard of Shaw, it's a real big bustling city, just not too far away. Anyway, I really... Running for school board was somewhat of a last-minute decision for me. It's something that I've thought of for years about doing. But as a parent, I have two boys, ages 18 and 14, and I've been married to my wife Linnea for 20 years, by the way. And seeing them both go through public school and private school, we've had them in both and been able to see the advantages of both, public and private, and some of the downsides from both of those. And so I think I have a pretty good idea, a pretty good grasp on how the public schools operate and run. Now, I don't have maybe all the experience that some of the people up here have in education. I've worked 18 years in low-income housing for housing authorities. But I have seen what a stable home and a stable family can do for a child's success, and that is why I do the work that I do. I worked 14 of those 18 years in a management position, pulling a team together, leading a team, and trying to resolve issues that come across our desks all the time. I'm used to government funding changing on a yearly basis. I deal with cuts all the time. What I like, I think one of my strengths in this, in housing, has been the ability to streamline, look for cuts, look for ways that we can trim some waste. And I hope to bring some of that knowledge that I have to the school board. I think it might be time for something different than the status quo. Just because somebody might have a background in education doesn't necessarily mean that others shouldn't be in the running for this. So I believe I have some good team-building experience and problem-solving skills that I can bring to the board. I want to thank you very much for this opportunity, and I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Blazey, and I'm also running for Zone 3. I've spent the last several years in this community advocating for children and their families that don't always have a voice in the community. Advocating so that every child has the same opportunity to thrive in the classroom and to graduate is extremely important to me, but it's also extremely personal. I grew up in poverty, and I understand, know firsthand, how life-changing public education can be. But I also believe in providing the supports that allow each student to come to class every day prepared to learn. You may know that we have about 60% of our student population that live in poverty in the Salem-Kaiser district, but what you may not know is that we have over 1,000 students that are homeless. And those are just the ones that we've been able to count. A few years ago, a good friend of mine and I started a nonprofit that throws birthday parties for children living in our local homeless shelters. And it's through that work that it's become even more clear to me the importance of an education system that provides equal opportunity to every one of our children, and that's why I'm running for the school board. But I'm also running for the school board because I too am concerned about the graduation rates across the district. If only 75% of our students are graduating, that means that 25% of our children don't have the same opportunities for the future, and that's just not acceptable. As a performance auditor for the Secretary of State Audits Division, I've spent the last 15 years analyzing our state's K-12 education system. So we've made recommendations at the statewide level on ways to improve or to increase or decrease chronic absenteeism, and also ways to decrease achievement gaps for students of color and those living in poverty. We've also made recommendations on how to increase the number of GEDs for those that have already dropped out. We're currently looking at statewide graduation rates and alternative education programs. So I think that experience will be extremely valuable on the school board. As your next school board member representing Zone 3, I'm committed to the following: decreasing chronic absenteeism and increasing graduation rates; continuing to invest in programs that we know work, such as STEM or STEAM, career technical education, music and art. And I'm also committed to ensuring that we have safe and adequate facilities. And we can't even begin to lower class sizes until we address the capacity issues at so many of our schools. And as an auditor by trade, I'm certainly committed to ensuring fiscal accountability of scarce educational resources. There's nothing more important in our community than our children, and with your support, I will continue to advocate for each child. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Thank you so much for coming. Oh, that's loud. Thank you so much for all of you guys who attend. I mean, it's people like you who can really make, who can really make the change. It's not just us on the board. It's not, it's not the teachers in the classroom, or just the, it's everybody. It's everybody in our community who helps out. So thank you so much for being here. For me, the reason why I want to run for school board is because, for one, from my story. I grew up in foster care, and eventually one of my foster families, they abandoned me in Salem. So I was homeless. I was actually enrolled in school in this area as a homeless student. And that's actually a huge problem that we have. And like you were saying, I was reading an article from OregonLive.com the other day, and it was showing how many kids we have in Oregon, just Oregon alone. It was over 21,000 homeless students. And at the Capitol, I was just there the other day, and we had 10,000 ribbons hung up on a tree, blue ribbons. If you drive by and you see this tree, it's saddening. I mean, the beautiful tree, but each ribbon stands for a kid that's abused at home. And that's just the ones that we know about. And so there's a lot of students who don't have an actual voice, students who don't have actual parents there to help them. And that's one thing that I want to do, is I want to give a voice to these kids. I want to help create more opportunities for our children. Part of that is the graduation rates, of course, just like everybody else. And I believe that there are different ways that we can do that. And with my youth and my energy, I believe that I can bring a lot more creative ideas to the school board, as well as a lot of energies. That way, it's a lot more, it's a lot more welcoming to people who come and people who speak. And I also believe that the school board should serve, not from the top down, not as a board talking to people, but I think it should be flipped around. I mean, we're here for the kids. That's why we're here. And then after the kids, come to the parents, the people who take care of the children day in and day out. After them, the teachers, the people who are there just as much for the kids. Sometimes, sometimes just as much as the parents are, depending on the situation. And then we're here to serve you. So I think another thing that I would like to change is I would like to be, hey, how can we serve you? And then how can, how can our schools better serve the parents? And how can our parents and our schools together best serve our children? And that's kind of the thing that I want to bring, and that's kind of the fuel I want to have with our school board. I want to have a welcoming and an open environment for everybody. Another thing is I also want to increase engagement with kids. I think that CTE does a great job, Career and Tech does a great job of showing kids another, another option, another route. Because the point of high school is to help our kids be prepared for the future, whether it's just the workforce or it's college. Not every kid goes to college. Even in our best state, we don't have a 100% graduation rate. And so there has to be another option as well, and that does a great job of teaching our kids another option. Another way would be also increasing, increasing the engagement in stuff we do with our students. For example, North Salem High School, they just dropped down to 5A. They're a 6A school for their sports. And that's unfortunate, because I was talking to a few teachers from there, and they were saying that, well, we just don't have the talent pool right now. It's not, it's not just that. It's the fact that a lot of kids can't afford the sports, a lot of them can't afford the equipment. There's a lot of things that go along with this. And I believe that with the opportunity... Oh, I'm done. Thank you so much, guys, for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Oh, I just got a little bit nervous. Sorry. My name is Levi Herrera Lopez. I'm running for school board. I play many roles in the community, but right now, my main role is being a husband and a father to 16-month-old twins who are staying home because they would probably be just running all over the place. So I graduated from McNary High School. I also attended Chameca Community College and Portland State University. And right now, I serve on the budget committee. I also volunteer on many, many nonprofit boards, including Family Building Blocks and even Capital Community Television. Really, the reason why I do all of that, the reason why I decided to run for school board is because I truly, truly believe in the idea that every child in Salem and Kaiser can graduate. I want to live in that sort of community, where every single child graduates, has stable employment, and is able to live a healthy and productive life. I have a tough life experience that's helped me to get to where I'm at. When I first came into this community about 20 years ago, my family was also homeless, and we had just a lot of hardships. I found a... I found a welcoming community at McNary High School, where I actually got really involved becoming officer on the, on FBLA and founding a multicultural club. For the last twenty years, my passion has been working with disconnected youth, families who are not always present in rooms like this. And I have a deep, deep personal understanding of that, because I remember being told in school that I wasn't, I wasn't really welcomed by classmates and even by some teachers who didn't take the time to get to know me and how complex and challenging my life is. And I want to bring that experience to the board. I have, along with that, I have twenty years of professional experience, working with these families, doing engagement. And I've been showing that for all this time, that I can work with people across political barriers, about, across socioeconomic barriers, and especially across cultural barriers. I believe that I can be a strong representative for the community, and I want to have the opportunity to serve the people of Zone Five and all of Salem and Kaiser. Thank you.
My name is Paul Kylo. Yes, it's upside down for a reason. Thank you. I'm the incumbent in Zone Seven, and I am rerunning. So the state of my mental health could be in question. I don't know what else to say. If you have an interest in what I have voted for, what I'm interested in, you can go back and check the CCTV log for the past four years and look at the various votes we've held, the various no votes and arguments and discussions. I do want to thank the district and the chamber for allowing me to once again get to meet the people I'll be working with. I look forward to that and that opportunity. And quick background, I worked for twenty years as an advocate for teachers and support individuals in the school district, building coalitions, working with administrators as well as teachers and bus drivers and secretaries and specialists and interpreters for the deaf and on and on and on. And my goal always was to build coalitions and to build bridges. And I like to think that that, that after I retired, that work has continued. So with that, thank you very much, and please enjoy the evening.
Well, thank you to our candidates for giving us that brief introduction. Again, I will be asking the questions, and every candidate will have one minute to answer. Same process. Yellow means fifteen seconds left, and red means your time is up. This is an opportunity for our candidates to talk about why they should be on the school board and not why others shouldn't be. Let's keep this positive. So first question, we will be starting off with Mr. Paul Kylo. What can the district do to further support the Hispanic population, many of whom cure, many of whom are ELL students or Title I schools?
Would you repeat the question?
What can the district do to further support the Hispanic population, many of whom are ELL students or Title I schools?
I want to make sure I heard it. To fairly support the students?
Yeah.
To provide equity? Okay. I would see that as, my understanding is, what we're talking about then is doing as much as we can to continue the efforts to put bilingual programs in, to get the bilingual curriculums that we're supposed to have and that we've been working on achieving. It would also be putting in the appropriate supports for families, as well as working with our staffs to go out and make those connections, which we do. We're also, I know, heavily trying to recruit ESOL bilingual and teachers and support staff who fit the demographics that match our students more. Who does it go to?
So I, I believe that the school board and the administration have taken really good steps in that direction. We definitely need to continue supporting to create a more diverse staff. We have still a huge gap in that, but that, and that's an area that we still need to work on. We also, and, and that comes with recruiting and also retaining this, this staff that come into our district. Engagement of youth themselves in the school district with the curriculum and with the teachers is a huge portion. We've really seen that when the kids get to respect the, the building, the people, whatever, their, their engagement increases. Chronic absenteeism is a symptom of that disengagement, and there are, and that creates opportunities for nonprofits and for just members of the community to join and increase that, that engagement of youth.
Well, first, I would like to say that our current school board has done great, great steps to make more safe and welcoming schools, like with the new forum. So thank you, Paul, and other members of the board. I'd also like to say that a lot of the problems that are happening with, with our Hispanic community, as well as a lot of our communities, of course, one of it is, is poverty. That is a problem that we do need to deal with, and we need to create more opportunities for our kids. Because I believe that kids inherently, they, they can achieve wonders if they just have the opportunity to try. And I know that a lot of kids can achieve great success if they're given the chance. And so I think that with a lot of these kids, we just need to give them the chance, we need to give them the opportunity by engaging with them, by having them, having them engage with each other. And a lot of that would be like extracurricular activities, as well as just getting them more involved and having them work more together. So that way, as, as a team, as a group, we can all work together to help make sure that we have more opportunities for these children.
So regarding the Hispanic community, what can we do to better support Latino students and those particularly in Title I schools? Some of it's been discussed, and I am thrilled that we would all be thinking the same things. One, it starts with a teaching population that's more reflective of our current community population. So if we have schools that have sixty, seventy, eighty percent Latino or ELL students, we absolutely need a teaching population that reflects that. With regards to challenges with Title I, whether it's a Hispanic or Latino student or a white student, providing the services that any of those students need to be successful in the classroom. And for me, that's things like continuing to ensure that we do provide breakfast and lunch for students who can't afford, you know, we know that we're still recovering from the recession right now, and all of our students need those supports.
I also have to say, I think the schools have done a wonderful job already in helping Hispanic population, and both private schools too. And so I have to commend the board and the teachers and every school that, that has reached out. Of course, there's always room for improvement, and really, what I, I expect to be and what I want to be is a voice for the community and listen to what parents are needing and what they're wanting for their kids. Sometimes, it's easy to think what our ideas or our plan might be, it might be the best for somebody else. We need to listen to our neighbors and be a voice for them and help to advocate that way. So that's what I intend on doing.
Mr. Ross, what's your group?
Great. So I would also agree that staffing should reflect the student population. I think that's the really important part, a really important place to start. I think the visibility of Latino population should be elevated in the community and also in the district. I'm president of Salem Creative Network, and one thing we found, for programming-wise, is having a Spanish-language production attracts new viewers. With CCTV, we do every year the Cherry City Music Festival. We have one night of simulcast Spanish-language music with KMUZ. It's really a community project. These types of visibility raising is really important to get the culture of Latino population in front of Salem. And I think we can all learn from that, and my time's up.
I'd like to also echo that, how pleased I am that the superintendent and the board passed a resolution on safe and welcoming schools. That's a great first step, and we need to continue that. We need to continue to work on engaging the, our diverse populations within, within our community, and one of the ways that we can do that is by having representation on the board. So I'm very, very pleased that Levy is running. We, we need to recruit and retain a diverse staff, which is challenging, but is something that we absolutely need to do. We need to have role models that the kids can look up to that look like them. As far as Title I schools go, we need to continue the supports that are out there right now with free and reduced lunch, where the sixty percent of the kids in our district qualify for that. And you cannot learn if you're hungry. We have to be sure that all kids have the opportunity to succeed.
Thank you. And again, I think our school board does a wonderful job, and I'm very proud of them. But sometimes my opinions are a little different. Of course, we need a variety of adults that children can look up to, Hispanic adults, Russian adults, Chinese adults. I understand that. But I also think it's absolutely imperative that those kids are not separate. I think we have bilingual classes, and that's good, but I want playgrounds and times that mix children. People are coming here to be a part of our culture, and I want to know where they came from, and I want to understand their culture. But I also want them to understand our culture. I think the most important part is that we provide good role models despite where they came from. I want children to work with people that are already here, so they learn to respect that and understand that.
Thank you.
And vice versa.
Thank you, Mrs. Ross.
But if you put children to play together, they get along together beautifully.
We've heard a lot of ideas from the other candidates about how to help the Hispanic community thrive in our school district. And what I would say is, there are a lot of good ideas that have been mentioned, and the school board has taken some positive steps. But I think the most important thing is to actually be aggressive about inviting the Hispanic community into conversation with the school board and not presume that we know what the solution is for that community. If we are intentional about inviting them into deep conversation in front of the board, with the board, in front of the community, with the community, we have a greater opportunity of, together, realizing what the solutions are moving forward. A lot of good ideas here this evening, but let's not assume that that's the complete
Thank you. So this time, we will be starting with Mr. Bateman. In light of Salem Kaiser's long history of supporting music programs in all of its schools and the high percentage of, percentage of numbers of students in music, will you commit to maintaining support for, for music programs?
So, so I have, both of my kids are orchestra students, and it's been a phenomenal program for them. So we have, in my family, a deep personal commitment to music and music education, and I think it's a vital program for Salem Kaiser and has been a real strength of ours and something that this school district is known for. As, as a general statement, I have no intention of cutting music, but I think it would be irresponsible for anyone running for the board to absolutely say any program is never going to be cut, because budgets are zero-sum games. And we need to have an honest conversation about the complexity of budgets, and this isn't just in the school district, it's at the state level. So I have no personal plan or desire to cut music. I think it's vitally important, but any promise is irresponsible.
Frankly, I have to agree with that. The state of Oregon is in a pretty tough position. Schools are going to have to cut. The next couple of bienniums, we're looking at a really rough road, and I think we need to recognize that. I think that it's absolutely imperative that parents step up and help and volunteer in the swimming program, the music program, in any of those areas. Because I personally think it's, that reading and math are still the most vital thing for a child to understand, to be able to reach up to their potential and be able to communicate or contribute to our community. And I would say that it's a reality that we're going through right now. Thank you.
The music program is unbelievable in this district. We've been so fortunate, and it's largely successful because of parental involvement and the, the amount of parents who will go before the board and will do fundraising. That's the kind of community engagement we need to keep these programs alive in a very difficult budget situation. So all of the arts, all the extracurricular activities that are, that keep our kids engaged and keep them on track to graduate, we are going to have to work together as a community to keep those programs alive, and it's going to be a big challenge, but we know that how important they are. So they, even though we're in a tough budget cycle, we can't say that they're going to go away. It's going to mean that we, we as a community have to have a very difficult discussion, and everyone's going to have to step up and help out and do the right thing for the kids.
Two thousand and fifteen, parents here at Straub Middle School elected me as the president of the school, the middle school music boosters. And I really am honored to be elected to that position. In this room, every February, we have all the music groups perform at the soiree. This year, we made nine thousand dollars in one night for a middle school music program. Okay? This does not happen at every middle school in the, in the city. We need to think about that. But that happened only because our group was able to talk to about sixty businesses that donated six thousand dollars value of door prizes, and we put that money back into baritones, chimes. And my favorite is we actually got improv lessons for jazz, which I think is very valuable. We need to take this world-class music program that we have and...
Thank you, Mr. Swartzenjuber. Thank you, Mr. Swartz and Duber.
Should I yield some time for your, the rest of your sentence? Music is very important to me and that's something that would, I would really have to look at other areas before music would be cut. It's very near and dear to my heart because I had dreams of doing music and I followed those dreams into adulthood and it was because of the programs that were available in school that I could take part in that and learn from that and, and gain confidence in. So music is, is something that is very important to me and it leads to so many creative outlets and ideas that kids can, can succeed in so many different areas. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of doing everything I can to keep music a big part of the schools.
So I would absolutely agree with that. Music is a huge part of this community of education and I, we do everything possible as well. I think that music, whether it's music or art, that is absolutely how we keep kids engaged in, in school. It's one of the things that keeps them coming to class, keeps them coming to school and it absolutely is a way to improve our graduation rates. And so not only am I in favor of continuing to support it, but to increase any kind of support to that because it's proven to keep kids in the classroom. But I think for me, a lot of this comes down to equity across the district. And, you know, we just heard an example of a school who's able to do that through, through parents. Not all of our schools and communities have that opportunity. So I think this is an opportunity for us to partner even further with the business community to make that happen across the entire district. Thank you.
I completely agree. I feel like our music programs are very important to an education for a child. The reason is because math and writing, those are great and we have to have those and of course, those can help you learn exceedingly. But, and those are over here. But the other side of your brain is meant for other things rather than just math and reading and writing, that sort of thing. And that's your creative side. And music, music brings people together, whether it's a concert, whether it's just somebody playing. It brings more beauty to life than just math and books. And I think that music is very important. And so I was told that it was irresponsible to keep something like that, although I disagree. I think that that's something we do need to have. And in fact, even if for some reason, if I was on the school board and they, people got rid of it, I would find a way to make it happen. We get, we can do other things other than just sit on a board and say yes or no. We can go out and we can find other people, form coalitions with other, with other businesses and find other people who are passionate about this to make sure that our kids can have the education that they want and to make sure that every kid has the opportunity to not just learn by, from a book, but to also learn about life.
Thank you, Mr. LeFol.
So I am not talented in music, but I did want to play soccer when I was in high school. Because of my family's financial situation, I was not able to. So being youth, being able to have access to extracurricular activities, including music, is very important for me. And I would, I, I, I do agree, I don't want to make a commitment to specific actions, but the commitment that I'll make is to make sure that those opportunities are available to, to kids with partnerships with, between the district and also businesses and other members and just volunteers to, to make sure that those opportunities are there because those extracurriculars really help expand the universe and, of the youth and make them better-rounded individuals. So I definitely support that.
I agree. Music programs will continue. They may not be in the same form that they currently are, but they will continue to exist as long as we have schools and kids in them.
For our next question, we will be starting with Paul Kilo. So our question is, what do you hope to contribute to, what do you hope to contribute, contribute to the school board and district if you are elected?
Uh, I believe I would contribute my outside-the-box thinking, bringing in different perspectives and I, I'm a failure at retirement, so I have a lot of time to contribute by doing school visits and getting out and talking to people and representing the school district and the school board and various community activities.
So one thing I will definitely contribute is to make sure that we come up with new ways to engage everybody in our district. My, my personal and professional experience has shown that I, that I know how to engage with those people that, like I said, are not traditionally in the room, even if you look at tonight's event. I also have, as I said, a lot of experience as a director of a nonprofit, which is my, my job, working with budgets and making those tough decisions. I have a lot of experience and again, my commitment is about making every choice with, with kids, families and our community first. And I hope I have the chance to, to serve the community in this role.
Well, first I'd like to say that for the school board, I can bring a lot of energy and it's, I can also bring the perspective from a student. I'm a current full-time student at Schumacher Community College while working my full-time job. And as a student, I mean, I'd be the only person on the board who's been in school since the iPhone's been invented. And we, we've had, we, we've had a lot of things happen since then and we, we keep moving, we keep progressing. But the thing is, our students also need a voice. We need someone who can understand what it's like to have been, to not have had the same opportunities as every other kid. And that's a perspective that I can bring. Another thing that I'm very good at is bringing people together. That's something that I hold dear to my heart. Even though we're, we're campaigning and everybody's trying to get our, our votes, I think at the end of the day, we're a community. At the end of the day, you guys, we're still, we're still neighbors. We still live in the same city. And so for me, that's what I care about more, more than anything is just us working together. And I think that if we work together and if that's our goal, to help our kids rather than just to win this campaign, I think that we can truly make a difference. And I really think that if we, if we focus on setting egos aside and really focus on helping our kids, that we can make a big difference.
Thank you. So what I would bring to the school board is significant experience committing to the community and professional experience. So I mentioned working as, as an auditor, but I also take on big-picture challenges and, and also know how to build consensus. I've served this community as an appointee to the Salem City Council, was willing to step up and do that and have been on the planning commission for several years now. And I'm not the individual that sits on the sidelines and waits for others to address challenges. I mentioned a nonprofit that, that we started a couple of years ago that focuses on underprivileged children in the community. So I have that experience and certainly lots of experience with regards to budgets and how to address big challenges in the community and have the, the passion and the heart, but also the experience to address challenges.
Well, I think I have a, a unique perspective being involved in low-income housing for 18 years and bringing people together and being able to lead a team and figure out how to do more with less. I'm a very analytical person and I have to look at things very closely and I look for waste. I look for ways we can, we can do more with what we have and I think that's very important. And I think businesses in the community are a big part of that. And I also believe that I could bring some balance to the board and I think it's important that the board reflects the community and the residents that are out there paying, helping to pay for the schools. And I think that the board should reflect that balance that there is in Salem and Kaiser.
Well, I think I would bring to the board as a member who's been in the schools quite a bit this last four, five, eight, nine, 10 years. I have three children in school, one here at Straub, two at Brush College, taking them to music practice before school four times a week. Testing could be addressed and music class could be done while those tests are being studied for. I think that's what I would bring to this, this board is a new vision and low-cost innovation. When this building was built in Calipuya, my nonprofit, Salem Creative Network, developed a program, the Megawatt Project, that bought bulk solar and we hooked up SEDCor and the Salem Kaiser School District and businesses and we had Salem-made panels installed on this roof and also down in Calipuya.
Thank you, Mr. Swartz and Duber.
As a mom with a student in the district, I've been able to see firsthand what's working and what's not. I've also spent the last year talking to students, teachers, parents, administrators, government leaders, community members to find a little bit more about the challenges and some of the ideas that we can put forth to make our district even better. As a physician, I spend my day analyzing complex data and leading teams through decision processes, making tough decisions, but I'm also a very empathetic listener. I have to have my patients' best interests at heart at all times and I think that, that ability to do that and be able to focus on what's best for the students in our district is going to serve us well on the board.
I think I could contribute to the board in several ways. So I have a very rounded background. I have done a lot in education all the way through from classroom to superintendent. And I do know in education, but I've also got a very rich volunteer life. I spent seven years as a COS in Salem, representing children that were having problems. I spent another seven years on the citizens review board and that was, it was our responsibility to be a watchdog over children and what had been offered by the state from DHS to take care of them. I have a very rich background in that. I've also been head of the state fair. I've also spent my time as, as finishing up my conversation here in a hurry, but I do know this community and I think that would be a good part of the board.
I said before that I'm a researcher. I deal with data. I am constantly analyzing things, but I've also been doing that in the context of for-profit businesses where I have been responsible for creating new products that will have an attractive audience in the marketplace. So I'm an innovator. I create new things. I've done that in a variety of leadership roles, both in, in those companies, but then also for nonprofit organizations. I also bring people together. My first job out of college was working for Senator Hatfield and had the opportunity to work on legislation and pull diverse interest groups together to be able to move that legislation forward. I am someone who has the ability to listen and lead and bring groups together to accomplish things that they hadn't previously thought were possible, to be transformational in the goals of the organization.
Thank you. Our next que, our next question, starting off with Mr. Bateman. How would you, how would you balance serving, how would you balance serving on the school board with your full-time job or other responsibilities?
Maybe we should ask my daughter, who's in the audience, how this will work. I, I have a, a personal history of being very involved in a lot of organizations. I currently work for two different companies and, and I balance it all. It's important to be present for my family. It's important to be part and an active part in leadership in our church. It's important to be in this kind of role. I've already indicated that I've been serving on the school district budget committee and facilities task force. Those are things that I stepped forward and was able to do. You, you decide what's important, you decide where you want to contribute and, and you figure out how to make it work. And, and I don't, I don't have any reason to believe that any of the candidates haven't thought that part through and are willing to make those kinds of sacrifices. And, and I applaud all of them and all of their families for allowing them to participate in the campaign, which is probably more rigorous than actually serving on the school board.
I'd vote for that. It is rigorous. I'm fortunate in that my children are grown and they're gone. I've done a lot of volunteer work. I've been a first citizen for the city of Salem. I've received several awards for that. I keep busy. I want to give back. I spent a lot of time in school in my lifetime and I know how it operates. And I want to give that knowledge of the ropes and how to get things done with the board, with the teachers, with everyone that's working to find a way to do things. I've been there, I've done it, I know how it works and I think I can help get things done. Thank you.
As pretty much everyone knows, when you need to get something done, you ask a busy person to do it. But having said that, I am at a point in my career where I'm able to cut back on my clinical responsibilities, so allowing me more time to give back to the community, the school board, and I'll do, be, still be doing volunteer work at Salem Free Clinics and working through Rotary and some other opportunities, but I'll, I'll put the time in that's necessary to get the job done.
Well, I've been a volunteer for 20, 30 years in town here and I think it's really important to be involved. My full-time job is in advertising. I live on a sheep farm. I, I take, I'm also the shuttler for the kids, so I have a lot of responsibilities right now. I did find time to run for state rep in 2012 and I got 9,900 votes out of that. I found time to, when asked by Senator Burdick and Senator Dembrow, to, to run in 2016, I accepted that and found time to run for senate. I received 23,000 votes in the district that's just right outside of Salem. That's only 37%. It's a red district, but I was able to meet other school board members and find out what's going on out in the country. And I really think that there is no alternative for someone to get us through this transformation.
Well, I, I fully intend to keep my full-time job out of necessity and, but I'm fortunate to have a family who fully supports me in doing this. They feel like, like I do, that it's the right time for, for me to step up and to give back in this way and I look forward to it. But I'm fortunate to have, have a lot of support and I don't have any trouble balancing what needs to be done. I have a disabled wife and a child that needs some special attention and I managed to balance that with a full-time job and I know that with their support, I'll continue to do that and fulfill my duties on the board.
So I've served in positions that have taken similar amount of times and have made that, that work. To me, this is, this is a priority. What we have to address and to tackle is, is a personal priority and balancing the time and finding the time won't be hard at all. You know, I, I serve on, I, I can't even count how many committees right now and I know that I would need to scale those back and I'm willing to do that because there is nothing more important than our children in the community and ensuring that they graduate. So, you know, finding the time is, would never, would never be a problem. You know, it would require me to probably step down from the planning commission and not serve on every single committee that I'm asked to as, as right now, but, so this would absolutely be the number one priority, along of course, with the nonprofit that focuses on children.
When I was in high school, I, after my parents abandoned me and stuff, I, I was going through a really hard time and I really wanted to be involved. I wanted to, I knew in my heart that I, I knew that, what I wanted and I decided, hey, I'm going to go get this. And one day, one of my coaches asked me, once he, once he started, was able to finally play sports. He was like, Jesse, how badly do you really want this? I was like, well, I want it really bad. He was like, well, what are you doing this weekend, this Saturday, like six o'clock? I was like, well, I don't know. He's like, exactly. He's like, you have to know exactly what you're doing all, like, a week from now. You need to know what you're doing a month from now. He said, do you think Bill Gates knows what he's doing next year on this exact day? I was like, well, yeah, probably. He's like, exactly. The only difference between you, me, and Bill Gates is, well, the, sorry, the thing we all have in common is that we all have 24 hours in the day. All of us do. And so for me, what he taught me was, he made me grab a paper and a pen, and I would write down literally every half, what I'm doing every half hour of my entire day. And I would do this weeks ahead of time. And he said, there's something about paper and pen that makes you dedicate yourself to it. And to this day, I still know what I'm doing every half hour of my day. And I will continue to do that, and I will continue to serve.
So I currently serve on a number of committees other than the budget committee. I'm also, I was recently appointed to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, and I also serve on a couple other committees. I'll definitely, the first thing if I'm, if I'm elected, I'll definitely be scaling back on a few. If I'm elected, you may see a couple of kids running around in, in school board meetings, so I'm warning you that, about that. But I definitely, I, I really agree with Mr. Baker when he said that it's important that the board reflects the community they serve. So I know that my employer mano-a-mano would really give me some flexibility to make sure that I, that I, if I elected, that I, that I serve the community in that way. So I've had some experience doing that, and I feel that, I feel ready for this challenge.
Hmm. I'm thinking I'm going to have a lot more time, since all of you are going to take over a lot of my responsibilities. So I'm feeling good about this. I'll continue to do what I'm doing, serving on committees. And as I said, I failed at retirement, so I can make my other opportunities work, so.
Thank you. Now we will be having our candidates' closing statements. These statements are, so like I was saying, our candidates, our candidates will be stating their closing statements. We will start with Paul Kylo.
I just-
Each candidate has one minute. And again, with the card, 15 seconds with yellow and red, Lisa.
I just want to say, I hope you will be supportive in my efforts to be re-elected to the board and that I'll continue to do the job I've been doing. Thank you.
And I just really want to thank all of you for being here. So you, there are many places where you could be, but you made the time to be here, and that, so I really appreciate that. And as I said, I'm, I'm ready to, for this opportunity to serve my community. I want to make sure that every child in our district has a chance to succeed. And I really want to make sure to help increase engagement and support all the work that this current board has been doing, the great work that's been done and helping it to get, get our district even closer to that goal of success for every child. So, thank you all.
Thank you guys all for being here. You guys are wonderful. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to make it. For me, once again, I really want to make, make a voice for a lot of kids who aren't heard, and for a lot of people who don't feel as if they have a voice, especially for parents also, who don't feel like they're getting heard. I mean, feel free to reach out to me. I, I like transparency, and that's really what I want to promote for our school board. I think also, I also want to improve engagement, so that way we can, one, increase our graduation rates, and make our kids want to go to school and really enjoy it. That's really important to me, and it's really important to the students. And then also, I really think that I can bring a lot of energy and youth to this school board. And I think that's, someone that will bring everybody together is some, is something that we need. We need community, and we need to work together as a team. And that's something that I really want to promote. No matter what side of the board you're on, who you're running against, I really think that together, we've heard a lot of great ideas from us, and also from you guys as well. And so, thank you so much. And I think if we work together, we can really make a difference.
So I don't have the youth, but I have experience, and I have passion and heart. And I think my experience and commitment to this community has, has shown itself the last several years. But that's not, that's not what this is about. It's not about me. It's not about anything other than the children in our community and making this a stronger community for all of us. And we have some challenges. And I think that whomever is on the board, I, I get the sense that we're all committed to ensuring that we improve our graduation rates and that we make a better community overall for everyone. Again, if, if our students aren't graduating, they're not going on to college, they're not going on to career. And, and so that needs to be a priority. So, thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for your interest in the school board. This is a, you know, a time of transition nationally and locally, and we need to make sure that public education remains public and is protected, and that all of our students have the opportunity to succeed.
Thank you for, for being here tonight and allowing us to give, give our opinions and our ideas to you. It's, I think you've probably noticed that most, all of us up here want the same goals. We want the same success for our students, for our children. We all probably have a little, differ a little bit in how we can get there. And some of the ideas may be different. I would encourage you all to please look at our information on the, in the back there. Look at our websites. Look at who you're voting for. And I believe that I can bring a fresh outlook and a very, a different, a different type of approach in having to deal with cuts. For so many years that I've had to look at them and look for ways to, to trim the budget. And I know that has served me very well in my position in what I do, and I think it will do the same with the school board. But thank you very much.
Well, I'd also like to thank the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce. They have their newest re-membership today for me. And also, the Salem Kaiser School District. You guys are doing a great job. I really appreciate what you are doing in this community. Last year, I started testifying at three minutes after the school board meeting about opting out and about testing. And it made a difference. Two weeks ago, the federal government repealed the 95% participation rate for testing. And that's what the opt-out crowd was going for, is to get that repeal. And so that has been done. Personalized learning is coming to schools this next year. I really wish you would take a look at it, into prescriptive analytics, predictive analytics. Nobody predicted the outcome of this last election. So think about what that's happening with predicting what they're going to do with your kids in online cyber charters.
The level of interest in this race has been really astounding to me, and I think it really reflects the fact that we feel a little powerless at what's going on the national level, but we know we can make a big difference here locally. So that's what I'd like to have the opportunity to do. We need to analyze data effectively, look at what works, look at those models, and adjust them so it works in our community, with the goal always to be sure we're looking at student achievement policies. We need to be sure that we have, we take the effort that it takes to be sure every student succeeds. That should be our goal at all times. I believe I bring new ideas, new energy, and new leadership to the board. I would love the opportunity to be part of the collaborative voice with our community to work together to make this the best district in the state. I know we can do that together. Thank you.
Well, I also want to thank each one of you for coming. It's very good to show us how much you appreciate education and how much you want the best for your children. I want to assure you that I want the best for your children, my children, all the children in Oregon. They all deserve the best, and that's what we all want for them. I am very concerned when the news comes out with a $1.6 to $1.8 billion deficit. That's a lot of pennies. Even I know that. And we're going to have to figure out how to offer the very best to the very, to the very population we're working with and try and get by the next 10 years. Thank you.
A vibrant public education system is absolutely critical to a functioning and thriving democracy and community. I am firmly committed to making our school system the most dynamic and vibrant we can so that we can build our community and our society into the future. It's going to take innovation. The world's changing. And one of the organizations that's going to have to innovate is the school board. And not about the schools, though that certainly is part of it, but the school board's going to have to innovate in how it works and functions itself in order to be relevant to the community. You may have seen the Statesman Journal questionnaire. It asked, what are you going to do about apathy in the community? Well, you are a testament that, that there's not huge apathy. But we need to bring more people into the conversation, and that means being proactive and inviting them. I'd invite you to visit my website, markbateman.net, to learn more, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to thank everyone for coming, and a special thanks to our candidates. And thank you for helping us become better educated in our voting next month. I would also like to thank the Salem Chamber of Commerce, the Salem Kaiser School District, CCTV, and Broad Fresh Markets for helping today make, for helping make today possible. A final reminder before we leave. April 25th is the last day to register a vote. April 26th ballot will be mailed out to all voters and official drop box, official drop, official ballot drop site open. And May 16th is election day. I can see from the back, I can see from here that there's still a lot of food, so on your way out, if you'd like to grab another cookie, make, go ahead. And I'd like to thank everyone once again for coming out today.